Good evening. Welcome to this April 10, 2025, meeting of the Mansfield Board of Education. I'm Kathy Ward, the board chair. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:33. Jill, would you call the roll, please? Jeanette Picard.
President.
Martha Kelly.
Here.
Edith Allison.
Here.
Gregory Cecil.
Here.
Susanna Everett.
I'm here.
Sabrina Hasmer.
Here.
And Catherine Paulus.
President.
Thank you. Thank you, Jill. Edith, would you mind reading the mission statement?
It is the mission of the Mansfield Public Schools in partnership with the Mansfield community to ensure that each and every child develops the knowledge, skills, and dispositions essential for civic engagement and personal excellence in learning, life, and work within our local and global community.
Great. Thank you, Edith. That brings us to approval of minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes of March 6, 2025 regular meeting? Any objections to approving the minutes? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. Thank you. And that brings us to a very, very special part of our evening with a special guest, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Dart.
I am so excited to share this evening and this award. As we know, we talk about our mission of each and every child, and when we think about our core beliefs, tonight I had asked the board to celebrate with me our core belief around preparing global citizens. You know, ways back this year, I started a new tradition that I hope will continue beyond my tenure, and that is to create a superintendent's global citizen award that calls out our core belief about preparing global citizens. And this, this award really is in recognition of community members who exemplify this core belief as stewards of our community, nation, and larger world by contributing to a peaceful society and sustainable world. I think it really is like my three favorite bumper stickers I think of. Think globally, act locally. Margaret Mead's quote, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that has. And the inspired Gandhi quote of be the change you wish to see in the world. The person that I'd like to celebrate and give the second superintendent's global award exemplifies this in so, so many ways. So Ms. Virginia Walton, Mansfield's recycling coordinator, is the recipient. And you already know, well, we call her Ginny. You know Ginny. She has worked in Mansfield for 34 years, but I'm going to talk tonight about the years that she has served as the recycle coordinator and supported our schools, which really extends way beyond my tenure here in Mansfield and has touched so many generations. Ginny has been an advocate, a leader, a role model for our kids, for our families, for our staff, for sustainable practices. We breathe green because of Ginny. If you're like me, every night when we're washing up and I have to take the recycles out, the conversation is, what would Ginny do with this? When I started at Goodwin, I was just absolutely impressed that the kids were composting and talking, talking about recycling. In fact, I shared you that story of one of the Goodwin students banning plastic straws and posting posters everywhere. Well, it was, it was a student working with Ginny in the Green Thubs Club who had bought into this idea that not only can we do better, but it's our responsibility to get us to do better. Ginny has created these compost school programs. She's brought in resources, and when there wasn't the resource, she wrote the book that people use still today. She's brought in tens of thousands of dollars to our school system and town to support these programs. She's worked with our kids in after-school programs. She continues to be the champion of reducing waste and reducing the use of plastics in our food service program and in our buildings. She has increased the use of recycled or reusable containers during our meal services, but most importantly, she's an educator, and she continues to promote sustainable practices. I'm so grateful, but I've got to share some other things. The town manager, Ryan Alesworth, and the deputy, Maria, and the director of Public Works, everyone just applauds Ginny's work. The director of Public Works said, "Most dedicated person, perfect example of someone to emulate in terms of sustainability." We, we just celebrate all the things that you've done for us. I know you were on WILI earlier talking about the Repair Cafe, where if you have a broken toaster or knives that need sharpening, Ginny was the first person to bring this model to Connecticut. Mansfield was a leader because of Ginny's work. She talks about expanding the food rescue program. You know that Ginny was, is the person that paired with our chef to make sure that any food that was left over after a meal service could support the pantry and food kitchens, soup kitchens. She's an active member of the Pollinators Pathway Group, another facet of Ginny's life that shows you that she walks the walk, she talks the talk. She is the living example of that. She is a genuine homesteader, raising her own sheep, her garden, good weather, she rides her e-bike. She had a killer truck that she rode to the, the last dying breath of that truck, and we talked about it, and she had a lot of offers for it, but it, it just wasn't going to make it anymore. Ginny, I am just grateful. When I started, I saw you walk into the building, I'm like, who's walking in, peeling stickers off of bananas and sticking them to the wall and riding the tractor out back and pushing compost, but it was Ginny Walton doing that. I've learned a lot, but as I've listened to families and I've listened to teachers, and most importantly, our students, they've learned a lot from you. I know Chef is here, and I'd invite you to add if you'd like to.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say a few things about the, the wonderful thought partner that Ginny has been with me. I think from day one that I started, she came in my office and said, can we talk about getting the reusable dishes and utensils back in the cafeteria? She's come to me and said, can we figure out what to do with our extra food? And she makes our program look really great by all of these things that she's supported me with and helped teach my staff about. I've had other directors come to me and say, how do you do that? How do you get your kids to compost? Where do you get those reusable trays? And not only has she helped me get grant money, but she's also helped me figure out how we were going to implement things, and I, I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
I want to show you just a clip. Just in case you don't know the real deal, Ginny would never ask you to do something that she wasn't willing to do. And so she's always out there championing her cause here, wearing, I think, a recycled hat of sorts, but this video that I'd like to play is just classic to me. This is what Ginny does.
So dumping this bag, this is from the middle school. And when I dump the stuff onto the pile, the other thing is, is that I look for contaminants, things that aren't going to turn to soil. So plasticky things, this is a plastic baggie, milk carton here. And one of the things that the middle school, I, I spend a lot of time picking out of this, is ketchup packets. When there's hamburger served or something that uses ketchup, there inevitably is a lot of packets of ketchup. So anything that can prevent those packets from going in, like instead of serving ketchup in packets, how about serving it in a dispenser?
And that's what we do now.
That's what we do now. So Ginny and I at Goodwin had a chance to work with some fourth graders, and yeah, she was right in the middle of it, pulling out, you know, anything that shouldn't be there, like plastic straws or ketchup packets and, and such. And so you have profoundly shaped who we are. You know, we don't have a gathering unless we talk about not having paper products that can't be either reused, recycled. And I just know that when we celebrate the net zero school, the elementary school, that had traction because you lifted those practices up for us in many, many ways. And so my gratitude on behalf of the students, the faculty, the families, and our community, thank you, Ginny Walton. And to you, you are a global citizen of the world. Thank you.
I would like to take a recess for a moment if we... Oh, I apologize. And then we'll take a recess so we can thank Ginny personally.
Well, I just want to say it's a privilege to work for the town of Mansfield. You know, the residents here are so invested in their community. I don't come into work feeling like I'm beaten up by the community. In fact, I feel like the community is behind what I'm doing and wants these kinds of things to happen. So Mansfield has made it easy for me to be here, to tell you the truth. So I'm so grateful to you, Peter. You're a wonderful superintendent. I'm grieving the loss already of your departure. And I just want to clarify one thing. I wasn't putting stickers on the wall. I was putting stickers on a poster on the wall, just for the record. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ginny.
So let's take a moment and a little recess and go have a cookie and thank Ginny personally. Thank you.
Rochelle Marcus, MEA Copeland. So I would like to talk to you all today to urge you and Superintendent Dart to reinstate the behavior tech position into, at MES, into the 2025-26 school budget. When the budget was presented in February, a BCBA position was added in place of a behavior tech to limit increases in budget. Since then, we have lost our family liaison with no intention to replace. This loss, plus the loss of our behavior tech, will be detrimental to our core belief of students first and teaching the whole child. Our behavior tech position is 95% student-facing, meaning she works with kids the majority of her time. A BCBA will spend a majority of their time working with teachers, collecting data, creating plans for students. And yes, they will work with students, but not to the extent of our behavior tech. The work she does with students allows them to be successful during the school day. Many staff members are concerned about the elimination of this position, even with the addition of the BCBA, because they see the impact she has made since the addition of this position. Many staff members want to do voice their support for this position, however, they felt uncomfortable sharing letters or speaking tonight for fear of retaliation. Rochelle and I are here to voice their concerns. Our behavior tech sees about 15 students on a daily basis throughout the school day in grades K through four. For these 15 students, she checks in at the start of the day, reminds them of expectations, gives them encouragement and praise to start their day. Then throughout the day, she follows up with these students to ensure the day is running smoothly. She assists teachers with challenging, with more challenging behaviors and provides time for earned breaks throughout the day. She also facilitates OT motor breaks for students with 504s. She's able to communicate and collaborate with case managers and teachers to help everybody stay up to date on informal observations outside the classroom and in unstructured times of the day. She provides students with a quiet, safe place when necessary to help regulate their emotions. These 15 students know she is their champion and feel a stronger sense of belonging. Some of these students have had chronic absences in the past, however, her intervention and check-ins have helped ensure they are coming to school each and every day. Her work with these students gives them access to learning as well as for their entire class. When one student is dysregulated, it can throw an entire lesson off, making learning difficult for all students in the classroom. In addition to the work she does with those 15 students, her major impact is with all students. She oversees and responds to major and minor referrals coming into our PBIS reward system from both from both bus incidents and incidents throughout the day. She works with administration, investigating peer and behavioral situations that arise, as well as facilitating restorative conversations between students. She highlights referrals that need administrative attention and connects with the team to make a plan. She provides strategies to friend circles who may be having conflicts. She works with small groups to teach and reteach school expectations for all students. She helps locate snacks and breakfast for students who have not eaten or have come to school with no snacks from home. She supports substitute teachers with behavior management by popping in throughout the day to check on the class. She also organizes our monthly Positive Tiger Celebration, which recognizes students who are going above and beyond with school-wide expectations. And she is often the first responder to a classroom when a student is in crisis and assesses if additional support is needed. I could go on, but I know there's a time crunch. So let me tell you how she helps the students access learning throughout the day. She sets them up for success at the start of the day with her check-ins, reminding them of expectations and motivating them by creating highly preferred earns with an adult who has flexibility in their schedule, allowing them to stay productive in the classroom. She helps students determine strategies for self-regulation so they are able to rejoin their class and are ready to learn. She takes great pride in working with students to help highlight their potential and teach skills like self-advocacy. These skills help students stay engaged when something becomes challenging and reduces the need for adult intervention, teaching them real-life skills, because we all know life gets hard sometimes. She teaches students replacement behaviors so that when they may not know how to communicate their frustration in a productive way, they have a toolkit which helps them stay engaged. She provides immediate support to de-escalate situations before they spiral with positive reinforcement and space, which helps the student to return to the task quickly after a disruption. When we merged schools, we had many issues with behavior. It was overwhelming to students and staff. The addition of this position two years ago has made a huge impact in our school culture and student learning. You might be thinking, well, don't the teachers do all this stuff? Yes, we do, and five million other things. This support to the staff makes our job just a little bit easier. She's boots-on-the-ground with kids every single day. I don't want to imagine starting next year without her. I'm afraid we will be back to feeling hopeless and overwhelmed without her support of our students. Remember, at the end of the day, it's all about our students, and she's their number one advocate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, you are, certainly.
I just wanted to add a few quotes from MEA members at the elementary school, just to give you a taste of what they've been telling us. So here it says, "Just yesterday, she came to tell me about one of my students that she comforted at lunch because the child's grandfather had passed away. This position is about so much more than managing behavior. It is about making sure that students have what they need to express themselves, access their education, and grow as learners. I recognize that the board has difficult financial decisions to make, especially in these troubled times. We know early interventions make a lasting positive impact on children's lives, including their academic success and social emotional well-being. Students are entering our schools with more trauma and mental health needs than ever. Classroom teachers are now tasked with simultaneously handling student conflict, de-escalating students, keeping eloping students safe, and handling physical and emotional abuse from students, all the while working to deliver differentiated, student-centered curricula that meets the needs of the whole child." She responds promptly to teacher chats asking for assistance. She's able to be flexible and think on her feet when dealing with student issues. Whether that is stepping into the classroom teacher's role so that the classroom teacher can help the student in need, or whether it is removing the student from the classroom to help with de-escalation, she's always there to help. Her communication and her collaboration to the team is impeccable. I can count on her to check in not only with students frequently, but also staff. She's able to check on students in other settings when classroom teachers are unable to. Our team has seen a decrease in office referrals over the last few months, as our Behavioral Tech has been able to respond in real time to various situations before they escalated to needing administrative intervention. She's very relatable, and she's been able to continuously build relationships with students and support my work as the classroom teacher to help guide students and help them grow as learners. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Jen Rachel. That brings us, is there anyone else that wants to approach the board? Are there any additions to the present agenda? And that moves us on to committee reports, policy and curriculum. Jeanette?
We had an overview presented by Candace Morell on the different programs that we have. She discussed the reading program, implementation of the Benchmark Advanced for pre-K through 5, and then discussion of the Yale Education Program in Reading for grades 6 through 8. Teachers have, at the middle school, used some of their own modules that they have developed in detail, complementing coupled with these other units. We also talked about math. We, last year, talked about the move to the third edition of the Bridges in Mathematics, which we've used for many years. And now we're going through a program review similar to the process followed at MES. And they anticipate to have that recommendation by February of 2026. Health curriculum, they also had an audit of the health curriculum completed at the middle school, just checking to make sure that we're meeting the standards of the CSDE. And they have talked about some different standards that they would like to work on or give a little bit more intention. And the focus is really between life and computer science, which will relate to nutritional topics and healthy choices, and PE, which will relate to mental and physical health. And we will be having an audit for the pre-K 4 curriculum for health in the next school year. Jamie Russell and Hope Mahalan did a little presentation on artificial intelligence. And we've all seen some of that in our own lives, and we had the opportunity to sort of play around with that. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. That brings us to information presentations and actions, AI technology.
Yes, so board members, you remember a little more than a year ago, we had the first presentation on AI. And we started to have conversations around policy. And the board adopted some specific policy about AI. But the promise was that we would circle back and we would continue to monitor the development of AI in terms of how might this be reflected best in our policy? So I'm going to invite our Director of IT Technology Information, Jamie Russell, and Hope Mahalan, our Technology Integration Specialists, up. And what they're going to do tonight is give you some things to think about that we're going to have to talk about. And when I say "we," I'm looking down the road beyond my tenure, unfortunately. But in the fall, when there's the policy review, to look for language that is reflective in where we are with our understanding practices of AI. More than a year ago, we had a very different view of AI, and we talked about AI in very different ways. So tonight, you'll see a deeper understanding of where we currently are and how it impacts the workforce and our job and our teaching with kids. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie and Hope. And again, I would just ask the board members to think about the policy issues that are underlying the information that's being shared tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you so much for that introduction, Peter. And thanks to all of you for giving us the opportunity to come back again. As Peter mentioned, it was a little over a year ago, we talked to you when we kind of began the work with AI. And just a reminder is on the slide, AI stands for artificial intelligence. And we're excited to share with you a little bit tonight to update the work that's been going on in both of our buildings with all of our educators. In terms of what we're going to cover tonight, we did want to give you some examples of just a few of the things that we're seeing. This is just a taste. It's been pretty amazing as the years progress, the kinds of things that educators in our building are doing. We're going to talk about the use of AI primarily is the educators. Most AI is not appropriate for someone who's age 13 or younger, which is our learners. And so that's why most of the use is the adults. There are a few examples, exceptions to that. We also wanted to kind of go through what we've been doing over the past year in terms of professional development. Had a lot of great opportunities at staff meetings, team meetings, individually in classrooms, work directly with staff for implementation. Talk about some of the things that we've been conversing, both in terms of best practice at other places and also best practices that we've been seeing around safeguards and guidance around appropriate use of AI, which, as Peter referenced, kind of is a nice lead-in to some of the future policy considerations that we think we need to think about as a district. Thanks.
So just as a review of what artificial intelligence is, it's a program that can emulate human behavior, which means it can interpret reason or learn. AI began in the 1950s, but has since become really popular, especially recently with kind of this boom of generative AI. However, we have to be careful because AI, the definition has also become a little fuzzy. Many programs market their program now as having or being AI, and it's not always the case, so you just have to be thoughtful about that. How AI works is it's one of these kind of three processes. One, it's machine learning, where it learns from data to make predictions or decisions. Two, it's natural language processing, where it either understands, generates, or translates human-like language into text or audio. And then generative AI, where it can use data sets, it can use information to actually create items and generate them in a new context. And that could be images, text, a lot of different forms of media.
All right. So now we'll get into some examples and just a few of the ways that we've been seeing teachers and staff use it. And we thought we'd have fun with some of these. So the first thing, we've seen a lot of folks using it as a thought partner, where maybe there's something they're working on. So we took a letter that you've all read in December, Peter's retirement letter, and we fed it into Google Gemini. And this is an exciting piece that as an educator, if maybe you're doing a letter to families, maybe you're preparing something, working on something, you can feed it into Gemini and ask it for constructive feedback. So it's a thought partner. You're still the author, you still do your work, but it helps you kind of brainstorm. So as you can see here, it was very positive about Peter's letter, had a lot of really nice things to say, but then also suggested some concrete things to consider. And it is really powerful and has grown over the past year. You can continue to ask questions. You can ask it to push even further, to give some sampling. And the feedback we've been getting from staff is that it really is helping to kind of extend their work, getting them brainstorming and getting them to rethink things.
Our next one, one of the powerful uses you can use it for is to differentiate resources. So there's a few programs that we have been recommending to staff, and one of them is Diffit. And this actually came out of one of our pilot groups, which we'll talk a little bit more about. But they recommended Diffit as a tool, and we looked at it. It's a great tool to adapt and modify resources. You can use it to modify the reading level, the language, the length of a piece, the type. So maybe you want to take a piece and turn it into a different format, like a poem or a narrative story, an opinion piece. You can use it to develop standards, create supplemental learning tools to help support students' understanding of a particular article or curriculum work assessments. You can generate assessments to help see how students are doing with that piece, support items, and different sources as well. You can use it to find other related information.
So a third tool we want to highlight is Notebook LM. And I should mention, with each of the tools working with staff, we've been very intentional about recommending preferred tools that meet certain data privacy requirements and have a nice education focus. So Notebook LM has been a powerful one, where you can take source material that you either provide or have it searched for, and then ask it to generate things. And some of the things it can generate, it could be study guides, timelines, handouts, Google quizzes, which again, you can edit. But one of the neat things it does, it can generate a podcast based on a source. And so we've had staff members who, maybe there are professional journals and articles that they're interested in, they throw it in, listen to it in the car, or maybe there's information they want to provide in an alternate media format to students. So we took, you had a December newsletter that the Board of Ed did. We uploaded it, and five minutes later, it generated a podcast. And keep in mind, this podcast, these are not people, nobody wrote it. This is just what it generated.
Boom back, everybody. We're driving deep today. Say into something that I found super inspiring, the Mansfield School District's Board of Education Newsletter from December 2024.
Oh, cool.
And one thing that just kind of jumps out at you when you start looking through it is this whole concept of igniting learning.
Right.
So it's not just your typical, you know, here are the test scores, here's what we're doing. They're really focusing on how to make learning exciting for kids.
Yeah, I think that's a really fascinating approach.
Yeah.
You know, they seem to be focusing on not just the academic side of things, you know? Like not just teaching facts and figures, but really trying to create that spark of curiosity.
Right.
That drive to explore and discover.
Okay.
And really-
We won't play the whole thing, although you do have the link to it. But it is pretty phenomenal. And it's pretty exciting that, again, it's another one where you put it in, and five minutes later, now they've generated a conversation, which if you didn't know it was AI, you would just think it was two people talking about it. And we've been impressed how accurate it often is. And I think, as you saw from those first 40 seconds, I think that's pretty true to what we're doing as a district and trying to highlight.
So the next one is another tool called Brisk. And Brisk allows you to take some student writing and give some additional feedback in the development of student work. And it's kind of a resource that teachers can use to get ideas on how to analyze student work and give them feedback. So you can ask it to help you give some glows and grows, areas of strength, growth, and probing questions. It can ask you to help develop some next steps for the students. It can also help you inspect a student's writing to show revision in real time, so you can see how they came up with their thoughts. And also, you can use it to help you see if they've met Rubik criteria and also develop rubrics. And you can also put in specifically your rubric and the standards and see the areas that they met the rubric and standards. I'd say Melissa Batulovitz in our Writing Center, she's been using it the longest in our district, and she's been having some really great conversations with students about their work, where she's giving feedback to students, her own feedback, thoughtful feedback to students, but then showing them and having conversations with them by showing them the kind of feedback that AI would give. And AI doesn't know the students, so it gives the feedback in a different kind of lens. So, and that's a great way to start talking about AI with kids, so they can see the difference between a teacher's feedback and then the artificial intelligence feedback. Next, we wanted to just share with you a little bit about our 2425, so this year's professional development and integration plan. So, you know, we had started some work last year, but this past summer, we continued with some research. Jamie and I both did research, as well as talking with the rest of our IT team about AI and the potential impacts on education. Got to go to conferences, webinars, a lot of reading about it. Between September and November, we really spent some time starting to think about what kind of guidance materials we wanted for staff, including our district preferred tools, which ones had the most data privacy, most security. And then in December, we met with the district leadership team to present these findings, to present our materials, and to work with them to develop a professional development and integration plan. And between the months of Jan- And between the months of January and March, we met with pilot groups at both MES and MMS to explore AI tools and their impact on teaching and learning. And we really wanted to get teachers' feedback, have teachers try some of these tools, see the different ways that they could be useful. And then just this past month, we've been presenting at both MES and MMS staff meetings to share the key learnings from the past year and engage all of the staff in AI and how they might use AI. We're planning to continue our work and looking forward to next year. One of the things that we're hoping to do this summer is have an innovation institute, which one of the options that teacher would have is if we give that, give them an opportunity to dig deeper into the use of AI when developing new teaching content, and really give them some more time to explore these tools over the summer and with a lot more time to dig in.
As we've had the opportunity to work closely with staff and in some cases, students, we've also been having a lot of great conversations that technology is always evolving, but this one in particular is evolving at a really an amazing pace and amazing rate. And our understanding of some of the safeguards, guidance that's really developed this year, and we've had some great conversations developing these with staff. So we wanted to share with you some of the themes that are coming out of those conversations. First and foremost, AI does not replace an educator. AI doesn't mean now there's a machine that does the work. It's, I like that concept of thought partner, because that's really what it is. It's just another way to generate resources, to work efficiently, to consider alternatives, to gather materials that you might not have thought of, to do modifications, perhaps in a quicker manner. But ultimately, it only works if the educator is present and engaged and is the one who's making those decisions and make sure, because ultimately, the educator is the one who really knows their students and can choose appropriately. We've also been doing a lot of work on the fact that it needs to be critically evaluated. As impressive as AI is, sometimes the content it generates is not true. Or sometimes the content it generates has a slant to it. And so that important piece of taking a look, checking it for accuracy, considering whether it's representative and so forth. We've had a lot of good conversations about citation, in the same way that none of us would take someone else's writing and present it as our own. If AI is generating content, it's important to cite that and be transparent about that. Some examples would be if, say, you were doing a letter for families and you're using AI to help you generate it, you might put a citation at the end, you know, this letter was written with the assistance of Google Gemini. Or if you gathered feedback about something that you're going to share with kids, be transparent with the kid that, oh, I used Brisk for this, and this was some of the input that it provided that we could talk about. This ties into the fact that AI would never be a sole source for assessing or feedback for a child. It's just one more tool. It's been great in terms of having those conversations with kids about, hey, here's what the educator noticed, here's some of the feedback from the computer, why are they different? What do you think? As we mentioned earlier, we've been very deliberate with staff about saying, hey, we have preferred tools here that meet data privacy requirements and appropriate for K-12. That doesn't mean there aren't other tools that might make sense too, but it's helped to kind of steer the work. Some final thoughts, the data privacy considerations, just being thoughtful about what we put into AI. Certainly, if it's a tool that might mine data, we would never put anything of a confidential nature, but even the ones with data privacy considerations, considering maybe don't put the child's full name and so forth. Being aware and talking with kids about the potential for AI plagiarism. We have definitely seen cases where kids are using AI on their own independently, asking AI to do the work for them, and then representing it as their own. And saying that in those kind of situations, that's an opportunity to have a conversation with the child. What kind of language would we use? What are some ways to be aware of that? You may have read there are products out there that call themselves AI plagiarism detectors. Fortunately, they don't work. Really what it comes down to, which was true before when this issue would come up in terms of lifting resources, it's about considering, does it sound like the child? How was the work generated? What kind of questions are we asking and so forth? And then finally, the big overarching thing here is it's about support for the thoughtful and ethical use of AI. It's not about banning it or calling it a bad thing. It's just a thing that can be used in a positive manner if you're thoughtful and ethical about it. And those have been really great conversations that have emerged, and I think we've seen a lot of ownership on the part of faculty where they're right on board with that. What it did make us think about in terms of some of the future work as we move forward, we have some policy language now. You can see the heart of it is up on the slide there and so forth. It is, it's good language. It made sense at the time of adopting it. It still makes sense. But given that previous slide, it did make us think about some of our existing language is more about obvious misuse. And we may want to think going forward, how do we start to develop policy language that gets at things like professional use, ethical use, citations, language that's not driven by a specific tool, but recognizes that it's an evolving technology? This is something all districts are struggling with. We're going to get to go to a conference at the end of the month that is at CCSU, that's a statewide conference where each district can send two educators. Everyone is wrestling with this. I'm sure our attorneys are going to have recommendations, so it's, I think it's something that's on everyone else's mind as well. And so we'll be in good company in the sense that I think there's going to be a lot of good input that's going to help us with that process.
Edith?
Well, thank you for a great presentation. This is certainly a complicated area, and I think it's getting more complicated by the second. You touched on some of the concerns I have, not only about creativity, but perspective, what perspective the AI brings. You know, you could have six language arts teachers evaluate a piece of work and get six different answers, and some will be better than others. And how do you know what we're going to be giving back to our students? But in terms of policy, something that you reference in the safeguards and guidance section that I think we should consider, you said the AI is not a sole source for assessment and feedback. And, and I think we might want to do something in our policy that specifies that AI cannot become a sole substitute for teaching, assessment, and feedback, that, that that needs to be spelled out in a policy. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Catherine?
You say that you have all of these safeguards in here like this, and that the IA doesn't take over. So when we're no longer here, is AI going to be our teachers?
So I think no, and, and I'll tell you why I think no. And it's not that there aren't some places that might try that. Why I think, why I'm confident it shouldn't be, and I feel confident we wouldn't, is that it's just another tool. It still can't do what an educator in the room can do. It doesn't have the level of interaction with kids, it doesn't have the larger context, it doesn't understand the things that are going on that day in a building and so forth. I mean, we've seen, it generates great resources and it's a great thought partner, but the reality is, it still gets stuff wrong, it still has a certain slant sometimes, it isn't necessarily the whole picture. So I just think, just like everything that's come before, it's one more tool. It does remind me, this is sort of a simple example, but I remember it, because when I was a classroom teacher and I taught social studies, and there was this kind of movement that like, oh, this is great, everybody's going to have a VCR in the room, and there's movies, and now you don't have to teach a lesson, because you just show a movie that some master educators developed. That did not work out in the same way that AI replacing an educator doesn't work out. But I do think it's a good tool that helps an educator.
Yeah, I just worry because, I mean, we have progressed so much scientifically and that, you know, we started off with these in a suitcase, and now they fit in our pocket. Who's to say that something like that's, that's what I worry about?
No, it's an excellent point, but I think it, it's the human that has to make the decision to use the tool. So whether it's a VCR, and I remember those days, and woefully was I wrong, a movie doesn't teach kids. A teacher teaches kids, but a teacher can use a movie to illustrate something very powerful, just like virtual reality, just like Ditto back in the days of like creating a worksheet. That in itself wasn't bad, but you know, the connotation now of ditto's and worksheets doesn't always have a great connotation or feel to it, but that in itself isn't wrong. Because if it's put to good use and the decision, decision by the educator to apply it at the right time, it's very effective. And so I, I think that it's going to be hard, because we're going to be trying to write a policy, not for a destination, but for a journey, that we cannot predict the AI of next year. Candace and I had a chance to attend some professional learning through CAPS, and my, my hero, John Haight from Anxious Generation, was speaking. And, you know, he got the Commissioner of Education to say, well, maybe it's time we get rid of computer assessments and Sback online and do paper assessments and more paper pencil kinds of things, which is shocking, you know, it won't happen, but I'm just, you know, it was shocking. And that's, you know, and we're hearing about Denmark that's dialed back all of their technology in their elementary programs. But here's the deal, we then went to another workshop where the person was just saying, well, just look around the corner at what's next. You think it's about screen time, but technology is going to replace the screen with something we can't even imagine, that it's not looking down but looking up and interacting in a, in something that we've not yet thought about. And that's kind of scary to think about. I'm like, what, what is that? But when I picked out my glasses, there were AI glasses there that had hearing and computers built into the glasses. And so we can't predict where it's going, but what we can do is spend more time thinking universally, what are the guides and guardrails of a Mansfield educator making good decisions for their kids? And I always think about the teacher that shows a video, and maybe they didn't watch the whole video, and there's something in there that they wish they knew about. We know that story. It's happened a couple times, you know, maybe even when I was a teacher. And I was like, oh, I should have watched that. Well, that was on me, and that's something that we should think about in terms of policy or regulation, or just embrace as norms for our school district. Good point.
Jeanette?
I'm reminded a bit of the Isaac Asimov short story, the fun they had. And that happened because there was a leap to embrace a technology that forgot about the human component. And so I'm hoping that as we look at these policies, we think about that. And I'm also wondering if after you go to this next conference, if you'll be reporting back to us.
Yep, it would be up to the chair and something we can entertain. I think we definitely should reconvene a conversation at some point before the Policy Committee reconvenes in the fall to put this back on top of the list of concerns. And by then, we've been promised some draft policies from the State Department, so I'm anticipating that you're going to come back with some examples.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this. This is eye-opening to me. Can I just ask, what, what is the burning issue that you worry about?
So it could be a lot of things, but I think for me, it's that the pendulum swings too far either direction, that it either feels like, oh no, this guy's fine, we can't use AI, it's a problem, and educators are very uncomfortable with it. Or there's the feeling that, oh my God, it's, it's so amazing, it does so many things, it's always the answer. I think that throughout the year, I'm confident that's not going to happen here, because I think that's been the drumbeat, and I think we've been hearing that from everyone who works in the schools, that everybody gets it, just like any tool, there's moderation, there's appropriate use and so forth. But as a society, I am concerned that it does seem like more and more all things about marketing and jobs, and every, say, every thing that everybody does is going to be replaced, and I don't think that's a place we want to be, so.
I think for me, it's, you know, making sure that we are, are having the time to give teachers and students a chance to really thoughtfully explore AI and think about the, everything we've just said here, the, the human impact and how to use AI as a tool in the best possible way to solve problems, to give people more time to focus on the things that really matter, those connections with, between student and teacher. The best things about any kind of technology is when it solves a problem to give people more time to pursue greater things in life. And so that's, AI is just another technology, but we have the chance to really plan out how we can best integrate that into our classrooms and help prepare our students for a world that we're, like Peter was saying, we're not even sure what's going to be around in the future. This technology is evolving so quickly, so we want to make sure that even though our students are not able to use AI today, we can still start having the conversations with them about AI, so that they, when they do have the opportunity to use it, they can use it in a safe and ethical manner.
So I'm hearing that time is, is going to be a big piece of this. It's exciting, but it's a little scary on the other hand. Okay. Yes, Martha?
So how do we as a district, discipline ourselves to limit the use of screen time in the classroom?
So that, that, you know, wider topic than just AI, but that's absolutely something that we're finding educators talk about, we're talking about with educators. Same concept in terms of not using technology for the sake of technology, using it when it's appropriate, when it's an actual add-on, using it as a choice, being thoughtful about how often it's on, being thoughtful about when we send it home. I feel like we're being very, you know, intentional and aware, but also being very thoughtful about embedding alternatives. So there, like a good example we talk a lot about is the Lego Robotics Program. There's a technology component there, but there's a huge hands-on manipulative component as well, being very intentional about kids having time outside and outdoors, having, being very intentional about kids' active learning and so forth. So I think part of it is limiting sometimes what we do and only using technology appropriately, but also just expanding other things we do.
Yeah. Yeah, excellent answer. You know, I think that we've gone through this buildup of one-to-one technology, largely driven, by the way, from assessments, Sback assessments, really provided us a lot of resources and grants to purchase this. Then the pandemic accelerated what we all thought was, you know, this pivotal moment of online learning, which we all learned doesn't work, right? You know, that there are components of that that might be helpful, but the fact that that could replace a classroom, we were, you know, just schooled immediately on the fact that that was not going to work. And so I think it's really a balancing act of dialing it back and finding the right balance. I told Jamie that one of my first conversations with him when I started as a principal at Goodwin, and we were talking about smart boards, Jamie said, I don't get nervous when I go to a classroom and I see the smartboard off, because I know the teacher made that decision that they didn't need the smartboard, that they're using something different, and in Mansfield, that's okay. And that's what we just have to remind ourselves, and we have to have intentional conversations, because some people still might be operating under old understandings that, oh, we're one-to-one technology, I've got to do something with a computer every day. And no, that's not the case. Jamie just said, we're not using technology for the sake of it. But Martha, to your point is, we, we also have to think about what is just universally good for kids, and what experiences can never be replaced in a virtual environment that has to be skinning your knees, climbing, running, playing tag, all those things that we would want for kids and we know that are really good for kids. So I, I think the anxious generation was a good read last summer. I hope it continues to inspire. I hope it continues to inspire us to find the sweet spot of allowing kids to reclaim some play and some unstructured environments where they can, you know, experience problem solving firsthand and they can build things. But what Hope reminded me about was, we are preparing kids for jobs that don't exist right now and we can't inadvertently have them fall behind the curve so that they're not college career ready and ready to join a workforce that's using tools that we don't even know what they're going to be. So we have to be nimble and flexible and live in this world of technology.
Well, I just think in our consideration of how much time in the classroom is used if the child is in front of the screen, I have to really think of, when that child goes home, how much screen time are they getting there? It could be an hour, it could be six hours. So I just want to make sure that we're really diligent about making sure that kids aren't addicted to it and that they really do it. And it's what we have after-school activities and no screen time at lunchtime and things like that, which I think are really good. And I think we need to make sure that in each classroom, that we're really, a certain percentage of the class time maybe, but not for most of it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Excellent presentation, very well thought out. Thank you. Did you use AI to put this together? Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Hope. Oh, okay. That brings us to school climate policy. This is the first read. Peter, I read as of July 1, this year, it's mandated that we adopt this policy. So we can't take things out of it.
No.
But can we put things in if needed?
We can add to it, but we cannot add things that would circumvent this policy. And because it's a KAB written policy, I was on a call with other superintendents. And Eric, if you could call up the first slide deck, I'm going to pick up where I left Tom Mooney and Shipman advised KAB. So this was a cross-state kind of effort to develop a policy. But Shipman and other attorneys are saying, this is the policy you have to adopt. It's the bottom line, the language that we have right now is the language that the state is asking us to adopt. And I'm going to try to-
Asking us or telling us?
Voluntold kind of thing, right? But I do want to point out a couple of things, because I think it's worth talking about, making sure that the board is aware. And my apologies to the Curriculum Committee, it was not intentional to circumvent that, but because this was an important conversation and timely and we were quickly approaching July 1, I thought it'd be better to just have the conversation with everybody. So it was Public Act 23167 that the language was drafted and was drafted in such a way that districts had up until July 1 to adopt. We were advised by Shipman to hold off, wait for the promised supports, because we were promised policy language and more information. And that had been kind of slow to evolve. And so it was worth waiting for, because we have a much better understanding of the policy and the promised supports from the State Department of Education are now being actualized and so we can take a look at it. The policy that the state is telling us to adopt shifts the emphasis from bully to challenging behaviors. This is an important distinction. Bullying is still in the policy, but no longer are we talking about naming a person, but rather naming the behaviors, right? So we're not in the business of labeling kids, we're in the business of talking about their behaviors and how some behaviors can be challenging. It is very clear in the policy that we must be a restorative school environment, a restorative district. So in other words, when we look at an infraction, we ask ourselves what harm was caused and how can the student fix that harm? We also are called to make sure that we're offering professional learning and training. In many of these areas, we are well ahead of the curve. So when I look at the policy and when you read it and consider it, much of this is already in place, but we still have things to do, such as a school climate improvement plan. So the policy is really holding us accountable to collecting data through survey, through other forms of evidence, comparing them to standards, to create roles, assigned roles of people that have to do certain things at certain times of the year, to create a climate committee that's represented diversely with families, student and faculty, making sure union has representation on the committees, that they write an improvement plan for climate and it's public facing and that they share it with the public and that the work is transparent. And so again, while there's elements that we've been working on here in Mansfield that fit perfectly to this, I think our lift will be forming this climate committee and creating a climate plan, improvement plan, that we share with our community, that's based on the data and survey results. Let's see. So in your old policy books, this will simply replace pages 377 all the way up to 420. Those are two policies that are getting pulled or redlined out. That's the bullying behavior in the schools and bullying a safe school climate plan. So instead, it will be the policy that was in your packet and that you have. This document to the right, it's just a screenshot. The State Department offered this as just a tool to help better understand the policy. I thought it was great because it had some question answers in the back, some resources. I want to caution you, because this is not the policy that we're adopting, it's the language that's in your packet, but this resource document will help you unpack it and think about the different components of it. The policy is guided by state law. Our implementation takes on the Mansfield flavor of like, how will we do that? And so this document kind of guides you through some questions and through some considerations. But it also puts up some guardrails of like, nope, this is what the law is requiring us to do. So for example, if there's challenging behavior that requires a classroom to be, the class to be evacuated, that there are some actionable items that the principal would have to do and to notify. And so we're just being really clear about like, making sure that when there's challenging behaviors, that we're communicating that, we're documenting, and we're more importantly, thinking about how can we make sure that there are the tools and resources that are supporting the challenging behavior, which is the student, the teacher that's in the classroom, the paraeducator and the community around that child's family. So the administration and climate teams, which are already starting to, there are conversations happening with both buildings, starting to gather the teams together. And their first task really will be to go over this policy and think about the forms and the processes that will tie in nicely to the work that's ongoing here in Mansfield. And I'll just go back one. And I'll pause for any questions.
Catherine?
I have two, two. I didn't really hear an answer to Kathy's question. Can we add to it if we have stuff that we want, to keep everything that's there, but can we add to it? Because a lot of times we are able to add our own little take.
Yes.
So we are allowed to do that.
We are allowed to, as long as what we add-
Falls under those guidelines.
Doesn't, right, undermine the guidance and the policy from the state.
Okay. And I don't know how to ask this question with, basically, what's the difference between he has or he is and he has? Meaning, he is a bully, he has behavioral challenges.
Well, a lot, because we don't label kids.
No, but that's what I'm saying is that, you know, I feel like you're changing one term for another.
Well, no, because we're not labeling who that kid is, we're talking about what that kid is doing.
But isn't bullying doing something?
Bullying, it is, but it's not clear as to what is the bullying behavior. So we're being called to talk about the challenging behavior. Is it name-calling? Is it using inappropriate language? Is it threatening behavior? So we're called, because if we don't describe the behavior, it'll be harder to correct the problem. Calling somebody a bully doesn't solve it. Talking about the behavior that we need to change helps us get closer to an action that we can remove. So it's important, because words mean something. It's like when I say, you should respect me. Well, what does that mean? That's up to your interpretation. Bullying is up to your interpretation. And that's the problem with the old policy, that we assumed we all knew what that meant and we all agreed, but then you have some kids saying, well, boys will be boys, or that's just typical third grade behavior. It's like, well, if we remove that and say, it's name-calling and using inappropriate language, then we can write an action plan that says to that child and to the people working with that student, reduce the number of times that they use inappropriate language that harms kids. And kind of think of the restorative part of it, too. If you name the behavior, you can help that child repair the harm that was done by that behavior.
And that wouldn't, I don't like the word bully, so I'm being devil advocate here, but wouldn't bully fall under those same things? Like, you know, he was a bully because he wrote this or, you know?
Yeah. Again, we don't like to label kids. And so I would just lop off that the student was inappropriate because they did da-da-da-da.
Okay.
Because the word bully is just too general. Like, I don't know what you mean by bully. Like, I can imagine that, but what's a bully to me is probably not a bully to you. But if we talk about the language, then there's no chance of disagreement and we have an actionable plan to address it. Like, no, you can't use that word.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. One more question.
I've read through most of the 13 pages and to me, there was so much subjective information and not, the other policy had a lot of forms where parents were involved, it was documented by staff-
Right.
And so forth. And I don't see the objective part of that in this-
Right.
As far as I've read it.
Yeah. No, it's not. There are suggested forms, but really the forms have to be developed by the Climate Committee and the Administrative Team, so that it feels like Mansfield, it's responsive to what we want. So the forms are not part of what's required in the policy, but there has to be forms to document it. So that's the next level of work, but the policy doesn't require a form, so to speak. That could be an administrative regulation that we would then put into the family handbook and we would eventually add it to the policy manual.
I just want to make sure it's documented, because if there is a student who just time and time again, I mean, it has to be documented each time this happens.
That's correct.
So that there, you know, so there's a history.
That's right.
And so that this can be addressed and the family has to be brought into the discussion.
Right.
And I just didn't see that as much in this new-
Well, so it is, the language is in there in terms of when there is challenging behavior, such as having to evacuate a room, or if there's physical aggression that results in injury, there's specific language about documenting that data point and that we have to share that data with the board annually, which we've started. So we've worked on the systems that help us collect that data to make sure we're accountable, that we can report how many challenging behaviors we've had in a year or in a trimester or quarter, whatever the board wants that report. But it's, you're right, you want to see the form to kind of get a better sense. Both schools have systems, so MES is using something called PBIS Rewards. And actually, just this morning, I was looking at it and I could see how many students had certain types of behaviors, by grade level, by classroom, by gender, ethnicity. It was a very powerful tool. The middle school has a different tool that they've actually built themselves that allows them to quickly disaggregate their data or aggregate it, to collect it and look at the totality of the number of challenging behaviors. So we already have those systems. What I hear you asking for though is, what is the, what would somebody fill out to document that? And we can definitely show that to you, but that really has to go through this, these new teams that are being created.
I think it's a learning, because you have one student who has a behavior that's repeated, what's triggering it? Can we alter something in the classroom?
Right.
Where the child is seated or what?
Right.
You know, I think we learn from those things.
We do.
Except you don't document them.
Right.
You're going, jeez, I think I remember, maybe.
Yeah. No, totally agree. And we are documenting it, but like I said, the new forms that are replacing the old policy are yet to be developed, but we have the systems to collect it and document it.
Yeah, I just was concerned also about, you know, this, so much subjectivity that you can get lost in that.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Catherine?
Are we going to have an opportunity after the first read to revisit this? Because like I have some questions about, I don't know what's going to be called now, but the cyberbullying. Because when I first got on the board, was the, I believe, the first time that we had a say on what happened outside of the school if it pertained to our students. So like I said, I haven't read this yet, the whole thing yet, so.
Yep. Please do and please share questions between now and our May meeting.
Okay.
It'll be on the agenda for a second read. There's no reason why we have to vote that night to adopt it, although we are a little bit up against the clock. And as Kathy was pointing out, we don't have an option, we have to adopt this policy. How we adopt it and use it and understand it, I think is your question. And I'm fully available and I certainly will invite our two principals to speak to some of the specific questions of what might that look like or what does it look like now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Peter, I have a question. This has to be adopted by July 1 and you're saying that the climate team is being formed now? Is that all going to be completed by July 1?
No.
Do we have a grace period to?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So the policy has to start and then during the school year of '25, '26 is when you're going to develop your first climate plan. That's when the team starts to develop it. Some districts and schools don't ask climate questions. We've done that for quite some time. So again, we're a little ahead of the curve that we have this data. Both principals added to the survey, knowing that this was on the horizon, so that we're asking more questions to help us better understand what is the climate of the building. And even our PDEC team added questions this year to the staff survey and we developed a new survey just for paraeducators, knowing that their experience and roles are often very different. We wanted to make sure that they had voice that helps us better understand the climate of the building. So, you know, it is building the plane while flying it, but we're in really good shape because we have a lot of artifacts. But the teams are going to be teed up with a lot of work right out of the gate and we have time to do those things. It's not like it's expected on August 1st that all of this would be in place.
That's what I was worried about.
No.
Martha?
How are teachers going to handle all of this?
Well, it's a lot of what we're already doing. So I think actually, much of this is going to fall on central office and administrators, because a lot of it is about making sure that we communicate and share the data and that we provide opportunities for teachers if they want to request an intervention meeting or families want to. Really, it's on the principal of each building and our climate specialists of the district, which would be the superintendent and the director of Student Support Services. So there's just laws now directing us to be clear in our communication, to make sure that we notify families when there is a problem and that they know of the due process, that if they want to- if they want to request a meeting. I have to tell you, though, this happens all the time. So it's not like we don't do that. You know, if there's a fight, you know that we're calling home, you know that we're following through. Right, you know? So we're doing those things. Sometimes policy is written for the lowest common denominator, so to speak. I think we have a lot of promising practices, but this will give us a roadmap. And because we have the climate survey that is now going to be public-facing and the data from it, you will be able to see the results of every single question and that will be posted on our website. And so that they can see the plan, they can see the survey data and know that the committee is going to look at the data and make some recommendations as to how do we best address this? You know, so for example, teachers feel certain behaviors are not being addressed by administrators, hypothetical situation. That will be public-facing and the committee will have to be tasked with, well, how can we fix that problem? It's not about vilifying, it's about fixing and improving climate. So I think it's a very powerful tool and I think the policy will help us if framed in the right way and that we remind ourselves that this is to improve climate, this is to inform us and to make it more transparent.
So just to clarify, we have no choice about the policy?
That's correct.
We have to approve it? We cannot change it?
We can't.
We could add to it?
Yes.
But that might be now or it might be later?
Correct.
Okay, that's great. And as always, you know, I know there's lots of great stuff going on and good work around this. I hope that, you know, I'm sure everyone will be super thoughtful about aligning this to the work that's already happening and the practices and the systems that are put in place in the buildings.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Peter. Next, we have healthy food certification, which we do every year. Peter, do you want to speak to this or?
I certainly can. So each year, you have these two motions before you. It is required for us to get reimbursement from the state for our food service program. It is certifying that we comply with guidelines about healthy food. This would include making sure that we don't serve unhealthy food or that we have activities that are providing food that are in competition with our food service program. So for example, we don't allow people to sell candy bars during lunchtime. Not that we would allow people to sell candy bars, but that would be an example of an egregious misstep of the healthy food certification.
Sorry, it could be sold at a, like a basketball function?
Yes, if we so choose.
So we have two motions, the first that you just spoke to and the second, I think, is what Catherine is referring to, which, okay. Do we have any questions, Peter, before we go on to vote on this? All right, Jeanette, would you make a motion for the first?
Okay. The first motion is pursuant to CGS Section 10215F. The Mansfield Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, included but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you, Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Great, thank you very much. And Jeanette, do we have a second motion?
Why, yes, we do and it's even longer. The Mansfield Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales.
Thank you, Jeanette. Good job.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Susannah. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. That brings us to second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to approach the board? Please come up and join us. I'm just giving you a hard time.
Rochelle Marcus, 7th grade Mansfield Middle School Literature and Language Arts teacher. Rochelle Marcus, 16 Homestead Drive. So I'm not here as an MEA person right now, I'm putting on my other two hats. I just wanted to take the opportunity of being here since I wasn't here for such a long time and because Martha brought up the screen time and Peter, you were talking about The Anxious Generation, which I have been doing so much reading about this year and trying to understand and looking at my own offspring and the students in my classes. It's real, this screen time addiction and this dopamine addiction. And I came across an article that was on NPR, it says it was on Morning Edition, I found this a few weeks ago, it says, it says this from 2023, June 12. I found it like two weeks ago, of course. But it's worth looking into and I'm not suggesting you create any policy around this, that's not my place, but it's definitely something that's being researched right now and being talked about incredibly, that a lot of the behaviors we're seeing and a lot of the mental health problems and the anxiety from the book, a lot of it is dopamine withdrawal and that, and that the dopamine input that the kids are getting all the time, it's not like supporting their pleasure center, but it's pointing out to them, like, this is something you want and then they want more of it, as opposed to, it makes you happy, go be happy some more. It's very interesting neuroscience. So anyway, I'm just putting it out there, it's super, super fascinating, especially when I look at my students in my classes and I look at my two teenagers. This is something we really need to start dealing with as a community. It's not going away, it's just going to get worse because generationally, like, the parents of our students have now lived with cell phones, right? So it's just getting worse and worse. But anyway, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you. Oh, sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rochelle. Are there any suggestions for future agenda items? Seeing none, I will accept the motion to adjourn. Catherine, Edith, second, all in favor? We are adjourned at 8:05. Boy, I'm going for new records, aren't I?
Finally got it right. Took you a bit. Six years?
A little more than that.
Thank you.